And six thirty, we'll call to order the May fifteenth regular meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Since it's such a small meeting tonight, we're gonna dispense with items one and two on the agenda at my option, and go straight to the call to order and roll call, please.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Vessi?
Here.
Ms. Frences?
Here.
Ms. Early?
Here.
All right, that brings us to the quasi judicial announcement and swearing of speakers. Can we have that now?
Yes, thank you Chairman. The matters before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board are quasi judicial in nature. In a quasi judicial proceeding, the Board's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the Board. The Board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application, and from the applicable code sections. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate for the record whether or not they have been sworn, prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration, based on the criteria established in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. If any Board member has disclosures regarding an application, please make your disclosures on the record at the beginning of the hearing. This would include ex parte and voting conflicts of interest. If there is not a full Board present at the beginning of the hearing, the applicant may request a continuation to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board. The following is the established procedure which will be followed in this quasi judicial hearing. First, city staff will present its testimony and evidence regarding the application. The applicant will have an opportunity to ask questions and cross-examine the staff and any staff witnesses. The applicant will then have the opportunity to present their witnesses and evidence, and the city will have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and any of the applicant's witnesses. Then members of the public opposing or in favor of the application will be given the opportunity to present their testimony and evidence. The applicant and then the city may present any rebuttal testimony and evidence in a closing statement for summary. The Board will then close the public hearing for discussion and consideration of the application. At this time, anyone who desires to speak at this evening's hearing, please stand and face the clerk, and receive the oath. Oh, I'm sorry, I will do it. Please raise your right hands. Do you all swear to tell the truth on the matters before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board this evening?
I do.
All right, thank you. Please make sure you state your name, address, and indicate that you've been sworn for the record.
All right, that brings us to item five, Application twenty-two ninety-three and twenty-two ninety-four, Ordnance twenty-two thirty-three dash twelve. This is continued from our meeting of April seventeenth, and would the staff give us their presentation, please?
Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. This is a continuance as the Chair noted. So I'll just note a couple of highlights to refresh your memory on this one. This is a proposal for some conditional uses in the highway business zoning district in three buildings on the southeast corner of Alt-19 and Dixie Highway. These are all conditional uses. There are no uses by right requested. Those are some of the details. This is where the site is. Again, location of the site. At the last meeting, the applicant was asked to provide elevation views and floor plans. They have done that. Starting on page thirty-six of your packet includes all of the pages. They submitted on that. Just a couple of slides this shows. Basically, a rendering of the buildings and the fronts and sides. And actually, this is a side facing the highway, and then an opposite side, and then this is the access within the project. And all the buildings look the same. They just have a different number of units, and this is basically the floor plans. There's probably some flexibility here. If somebody wants to, you know, a larger space, it would be, they could combine and not necessarily wall it off exactly like this, but those are the floor plans. So we did go through your review criteria at the last meeting. Staff had basically a couple of issues with this, but the main one being management of the uses with respect to them being assigned to specific buildings. So we suggested three conditions of the conditional use, and probably the last one, number three, is the one most intended to kind of get a handle on that, to go ahead and establish those uses in the buildings. Within a year, if they aren't established, then individuals coming into lease those spaces would have to come back for a conditional use in the future before you. And then we had several conditions, I wanna say, yeah, ten conditions on the site plan, which just address a couple of things that are missing, and just clarification on some of the permits needed and the site construction. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Staff is satisfied that the application is now complete, correct?
Yes, we are. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, just briefly, you're offering your, the city's file on this matter as evidence for the Board's consideration, correct?
Yes.
And your credentials are on file with the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board for staff?
I have one or two. I haven't gotten to it yet, but I did read it earlier. There was a mention that I think is not relevant now, that in a previous application, there was a request for rental services, and I saw a type of notation in there, and has that just been erased and died down? Or is there still a concern about rental services?
The applicant, when they filled out the conditional use application form, they put rental service establishment on there. But it's not on the plan set, and it's not what staff has approved, so it's not, it's not on the plan set. The concurrency certificate application only lists these uses we have here as far as trip generation and all that. So the applicant was pretty much, had to rule out rental service establishments based on the required parking. Higher trip generation, they probably would have still been fined on that, but higher parking requirement, and they did not want to give up more building space for that, so that will not be a use that they'd be able to do there. I'll go back to that list. I mean, they've got, you know, contractor, material, construction material establishments and service establishments, so contractors can come and rent equipment, but the public, it would not be like a, I don't know, what's one of the rental places? I'm trying to think of a name. Would not be open to the public for rental of all kinds of equipment, things like that. And I do have the definitions of those if you need those.
Anything further?
I have a quick question. It says in the, I think even in the staff recommendation as well as the request, it says any outdoor storage is prohibited. All uses on the site must be confined to and conducted inside the buildings. And forgive me, I've read all this before and I'm trying to remember it all. Is there, there is a main office or a way to keep track of this, or somebody's gonna make sure that's the case?
Well, the, you know, the remedy for anything, any outdoor storage, or, you know, this was meant to kind of address, kind of sometimes you get these bleeding uses, so if you have a, you know, landscape service establishment storing things outdoors, if we're repairing vehicles outdoors, that's the kind of thing, sometimes these things kind of spread out on a property, although there's not a lot of room on this property, so that will limit the possibility of this happening. But it really becomes a code enforcement issue if any of that happens. We can address it through code enforcement.
If I recall, there was one public comment, I think, and has there not been any further ones, I assume?
No, there hasn't, and honestly, that public comment, this, this application's been advertised twice because we were gonna run the conditional use by itself, but then the law changed where you have to do the conditional and site plan. When we, and we advertised that conditional use by itself. We did get that letter from that resident, and the second time we advertised, we did not hear from him.
Any other questions for staff?
Is this property located within our coastal high hazard zone?
I can't remember if I put it on here, but I would say yes.
And I looked, and I didn't see a relationship. So if it were residential, there are some concerns about increasing density in the coastal high hazard, and it obviously is not applicable here, but this application using a catch-all of, it appears, every conditional use that's available, does it meet our understanding of not improving, not increasing density within the coastal high hazard?
Yes, there's no density involved here, just floor, commercial floor area. And they would not be able to do every conditional use, just the ones you're looking at tonight, these six that are listed here.
Just for the Board's information, when you do have a commercial structure in the coastal high hazard area, what are some of the regulations that would apply in terms of the flood area?
Well, as far as flood zone, they can elevate it to the required flood zone, which they've chosen to do here, or they can flood-proof it, wet or dry flood-proof, any or all of the buildings, because nobody's inhabiting the buildings, but people, the public do come, will come into the buildings, but it'll be a limited clientele, but they have to be flood-proofed or at elevation, which is, I believe, I think I've had it in here somewhere, it's AE eight, they have to elevate to nine feet finished floor, and that's what they've chosen to do. And they can remind me if I got those, that number wrong.
And what does dry flood-proofing mean?
Dry flood-proofing is preventing water from coming into a building. It's pretty expensive to do, and it's measures that are either built into the building or put in place ahead of a storm, or both. Wet flood-proofing assumes the water's gonna move through the building, so just a straight warehouse is a good candidate for wet flood-proofing, for example.
But in this case, it's just above the flood elevation? All right, any other questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Okay. Does any members of the Board have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question, if I may ask the applicant, the owner, is it?
Please do come up to the microphone so we can have your responses on the record, and state your name and address.
Michael Muddles, fifty fifty-three Riverside Drive.
And you were sworn, correct?
Yes.
Hi, Michael, I'm Justin. I've seen one of your other buildings. It's a beautiful building. You do a really nice job, and thank you for bringing in the elevations for us. I appreciate that. But I did wanna ask something, and I think it's relevant, and that is that staff has a concern that sometime way far in the future, and I'm not, I don't wanna put words into staff's mouth, is that there's a concern that there would be bleeding of use. I think that was the term she just used. In other words, ten years from now, how do you plan to make sure that only the approved uses are put in those buildings? That that's not forgotten, and that's not overlooked, and when someone decides to put in a motorcycle repair shop and is out back fixing motorcycles, 'cause you got a lot, you got a lot of...
I will not, I know, I know for sure, you know, 'cause I've been through this. I own several different properties. And I, number one is, I don't want any contaminants, you know, I know the mechanics and all that, they contaminate the property, and I know I can tell you this, you know, I teach my kids, you know, my kids right now are starting to, you know, take charge because, you know, obviously, we're getting older, so I need to step it down, but obviously, you know, we're gonna try our best and not to do none of that. We don't want any combustible, you know, no contaminants. We're gonna keep this, I live, I go, I drive up and down Altona nineteen like fifty times a day. I mean, I mow grass. I get up five o'clock in the morning, and I can't lie to you, I'm gonna get home to nine o'clock at night. So I take pride in what I do, and obviously, I'm gonna make sure my places look nice and clean, and not let things get out of hand, and that's why, you know, I mean, we're gonna try the best as we can to do the right thing.
That's a pretty nice answer, and thank you, 'cause I drive by that corner every day. My daughter lives around the corner.
I've been cutting that property thirty years.
Right, and so you can appreciate the question, is that, there's a lot of door fronts there.
I respect what you're telling me.
And...
Mickey used to own that thirty years ago, and it's never got, I can't believe it, that I wind up getting it after thirty years. I've been mowing that since day one, but it'll be nice to see it developed, and I think we're gonna do a nice job there. And, you know, we just, you know, wanna bring a little more, you know, something else, you know, a little, some, like a business park, you know what I'm saying?
A business park with limited use and stays in the family for as far as the eye can see, and there won't be cars out front on blocks.
I won't have none of that.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
If it's out in the front, the next day, it's gonna be gone. I guarantee you that, or they're gonna be out.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we are to the public comment portion of our meeting, and I'm pretty sure there's not any. So given that, does the staff have any rebuttal or closing comments?
No.
And I assume the applicant doesn't at this point. So at this point, I need a motion and a second, so that the Board can further discuss if need be.
I'll make a motion to approve Application twenty-two ninety-three and twenty-two ninety-four.
With the conditions listed in the staff report?
With the conditions listed, yes.
A second?
All right, is there any Board discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Frences?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item six, staff comments. Do, does the staff have comments for us?
No, I did, well, just a couple of things. I did send the latest version of Legislative Reporter from Florida APA. I neglected to do it this year, but in years past, I would send you the updates, you know, every couple of weeks when they came out, and I'll be sure to try to do that again next year. I know a couple of you were interested in those, and they do hone in on the land use type bills of all the bills that they consider. So you can take a look at that latest one. If I get another one, I'll send it. The session's over, and some of the bills are signed, and some are waiting to be signed or vetoed, and some will affect us in our comprehensive plan, so we'll be updating you on that. And speaking of comprehensive plan, we have two workshops, sessions coming up. The first is June twelfth, and the second one's June nineteenth, your regular meeting. You don't have any applications on either of those meetings. It'll just be a workshop, and they both start at six o'clock. So that's where we're at with that.
Are we here or upstairs?
Here, but that's a good question. It could be, the media room could be an alternative. I'll certainly check into that. I know this room's available. That's all I checked so far, but...
Yeah, unless we expect a lot of public for some reason, it's a nicer setting for that sort of thing.
It is. It's a better working environment, so I'll check.
I will only be here for the first one. I will not be available on the nineteenth, but when I am here for the first one, I will likely have another member of my firm with me, so you can meet another attorney from my firm, and hopefully, they'll be able to fill in for me on the nineteenth when I'm not there.
Okay. No further staff comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Board comments. Mr. Vessi, I think you were gonna...
Thank you. I am unfortunately not available for the first meeting, and I did inquire with Pat via email to try and pretend remotely Zoom, phone, tin can. I was rebuffed at all. Which is fine. Would there be an agenda put out previous to that? Is there a topic, you know, it's, comprehensive plan is a pretty broad document, and I was curious, do we have a, an attack at certain pieces that are relevant to us, or we're just gonna cruise through it from A to Z?
We, and this is still kind of being worked on as far as exactly how we'll approach it, but right now, we're looking at bringing all the elements to you in two meetings. You'll get a clean, clean version of an updated element, and it'll be the goals, objectives, and policies. We're not gonna go through all the data and analysis. Relevant data and analysis, obviously, we'll be able to discuss that. So you'll get a clean version, you'll get an Excel sheet with strike through and underline of all the language. And then if it's been reorganized, you'll get a short outline of how that element was reorganized, like we moved a policy from, you know, one objective up to another one, 'cause it really should have gone there. So you'll get, should get three products for each element. We'll take some of the elements, you know, on June twelfth. Future land use is probably the most intensive, and the big ones, we think, will be future land use, coastal conservation, transportation, and then there may be some you go through quicker, like intergovernmental, or, you know, those.
Is this their evaluation and appraisal report cycle? Is that what this is for, or is it just an interim?
This is an update, this is a board-directed full update. Your evaluation and appraisal letter is due in August of this year. So we will, we'll, you know, let you know about that, but we'll likely just inform Department of Economic Opportunity that we are in process, and we'll be able to do those updates within a year of our letter.
Do you want me to cover the state statute and the statutory requirements? I can do that in about twenty minutes for Chapter one sixty-three, 'cause I do that for other boards, so it's something I kinda already have prepared, and do that kinda like on the front end. So in the first meeting, go through what Chapter one sixty-three says they have to do, and then you guys, especially since I'm new to your particular plan, I don't know what all you have in there yet.
I would say let's coordinate on that, maybe send us what you've got. The consultant will actually be here and be the one walking you through all this.
Who is your consultant?
Catherine, now I'm gonna draw a blank, with Benesh, Wasden Dale Oliver. They were, you know, bought by a firm called Benesh, and so she will be here to walk you through... through everything.
Surprise, I have a couple more questions. The consultant, is this the young lady that held public meetings, maybe a year or so ago, when we did the Worschat tests?
Yes.
Okay.
Same one.
Okay, super. So, at this first workshop, are we there simply to review and accept, or is this where the LPA, the Land Planning Agency, this Board, has the opportunity to provide feedback and/or suggestions and/or revisions to that plan at that point? Or is the consultant said this is how it's going to be, and I'm just looking for you to rubber stamp it?
I would say it's more for you to receive information...
Yeah.
...because you can't take official action at a workshop. So, if something's noticed as a workshop, you can't make motions, you can't accept it, you can give feedback.
We are looking for feedback at these.
Okay, so feedback, forgive me for interrupting.
That's the focus on us.
That's the purpose of this, is to review the document as it is and provide feedback to that document, see it again, see it again, and tighten it up?
Yeah, right now, and like I say, things are still a little tentative. The way the Board of Commissioners, the way this is being looked at is you guys are kind of assigned the bulk of the work. We're not having workshop, multiple workshops set up, at least at this point with Board of Commissioners, they are set up with you. So, we are definitely looking for feedback on all of this from you guys.
Is two workshops sufficient for this?
We'll find out. I would say let's, let's, we don't know the answer to any of these.
That's why I don't get to go to the first one.
[laughing]
Thank you.
So.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have one Board comment, and Ms. Kardashian may say it's a good idea or a bad idea, I don't know, but most of you probably know that B O C C has a workshop session Wednesday from 10:00 to 3:00 that you can sit on, sit in on electronically to hear, obviously not to comment, where they're going to go pretty in-depth, I think, into ethics and sunshine and a lot of things like that, that might be a little more in-depth information than what we've received at the meetings and the presentations that we've had. So, I was just going to suggest that it, it might be a good thing for everyone to watch. I don't think you have to watch it from 10:00 to 3:00. You can watch it at your convenience on YouTube TV, but there's probably going to be a lot of good information come out of that, and it may be interesting, too. Anyways, that's all I have. Anybody else? And we stand adjourned.